Thank you. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to B County Commissioners' Court. I'm calling for orders, a special call of meeting. Today is Monday, October 27th, 2025. The time is 9:05 a.m. We're physically located in the B County Courthouse Commissioner's courtroom, 105 West Crystal Street, Beville, Texas, 7812. That was Agenda Item Number One. If everybody's enjoying, Mr. Jensen, if we can correct.
Please beggar it. Dear Grace Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for your presence and grace and mercies in our lives. Just lead us and let us make the right decisions for the citizens of B County. Please, as amen, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, both. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Man, what a day of fluff. Golly, it looks like it's back. We all have shortcomings in life, and one of mine is that sometimes as I'm reciting something, I'm trying to think ahead. And when I was thinking ahead just then, I got two words or three words, two phrases, I guess, conflated. Lost my confidence and flung something that I can recite privately almost in my sleep. So my apologies and thank you to Commissioner Parias for lifting up his voice and setting me back on the narrow path of the pledged allegiance of our wonderful nation. So moving on, that was Agenda Item Number Three. Hopefully, it all goes better than that. Agenda Item, Agenda Item Number Four, recognition of visitors. This is not public comment. Public comment comes up in two more agenda items. But if you do not intend to speak of public comment, or even if you do, but you'd like to get your name on our official record that you are present here today, Agenda Item Number Four is the one to do it. So if there's anybody who'd like to identify themselves only by stating their name, and if they're with an entity here this morning, what that entity is, you may do so now. Please raise your hand, and I'll recognize you, and then you can, you gotta speak loud enough. Yes, sir?
William Miller, Lone Star Compliance Technologies.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Miller, and welcome. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Molly DeBorne, Little Bud Steak here.
Thank you for being here this morning, Mr. DeBorne, and welcome. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Diane LaRoche, President of the Beville Garden Club.
Oh, welcome, Ms. LaRoche, and thank you for being here as well. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
I'm Frank Massey from Mineral. Today, I'm representing myself as a rancher at Mineral and also as a board director for an organization called South Texas Property Rights.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. It's always good to see you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Thank you all for being here. Please come back. Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners' Court opening remarks. I can't remember from week to week, which I wear.
He went personally.
What's that?
Your flipper.
Okay.
Well, he went. That doesn't matter. Go ahead. I would've just thrown it. That's all right.
Who knew we were going to get into this this early? I'm gonna go to my left.
There we go.
Because I do recall going to the first last time. Say the best.
Quite all right. Come on. Good morning, everyone. Good to see such a good-looking crowd out there. First of all, I'd like to start off with a little recognition to our Road and Bridge Administrator Group. They've been answering a lot of requests. There's been coming through the county on a lot of road repairs. One of the significant things that they just completed was reseal coating or seal coating of St. Mary's Highway and South Gate. And there's a few other roads that's going to be coming down the list. They still have several items that they're going to be getting into or needing to complete, so just please be patient. We're getting there, and they're making some great progress. As an example, Boom Axxing on County Road 536 has been on the list for getting done for quite some time. It's finally been completed. And then the gentleman that called about County Road 605, that's also being addressed. So thank you, Road and Bridge, for your diligent work and staying on schedule. Pretty active week this week. I had the fortune to attend the City Council meeting, which they talked about the water conservation. I think we might have a little bit more information here shortly, so very, very good meeting. Also, which had pretty good attendance as well, was the Mental Health Fair, the event that took over this past weekend. Great event, great thing for the kids, awesome, awesome event. Also, as most of you are aware, attended the Leadership Conference, which is going to be once a month for the next four or five months. Great session. We had individuals that came in from different parts of the community. Very enlightening for me to understand what all they bring to the table, so, so very, very good. Also had an opportunity to meet with our NRA grant administrators and Tynan. And basically, these individuals wanted to mainly make a pass-through to look at the county to see what the water requirements and upgrading of facilities were going to require. They didn't do any major inspections. They just wanted to tour the area. And then Commissioner, they went over to Pettus as well, too, and just did a, I don't know if you were able to join them or not. Okay. But good information meeting for them. Attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Divine Wolf, met the owners, met the current operator there. So it's going to be a good facility. I encourage everyone to visit that place. Good food. And I like the idea they're going to have a little venue in the back for music and so forth, so it's looking, looking good. A little bit of an update on the old jail. We basically have a little bit of a pause. I'm waiting on pricing back from our contractors. The initial pricing that we got back has gone up somewhat significant. So I've asked all of the contractors to go back and do a little bit of re-engineering, value engineering, to see what do we really need. You know, they're, all, all three areas, both the IT, the electrical, and also the architect. So, so once they get those prices back a little bit firmed up, hopefully, I was hoping to have that last week, but it didn't come through. So we will get it down to our budget dollars. I'm confident it can be done. We just got to take away a little bit of the fluff, Judge. And with that, I'll pass to my Commissioner to the right.
All right. Good morning. We had a pretty busy two weeks here. I'm going to start off with, at the B Development Authority, we had a little work session over there. Senator Inobosse was present with us, and we discussed three projects. One of those projects is what Mr. Massey's on, the Screwworm Facility out there. And we had two new projects which are just, we're working on now. The other part, we had a preventive maintenance and safety meeting, and we had all present. We had some good ideas there to go forward. We had a couple of safety concerns. We could pair those, so those are, those worked really well. So Board to Crime Stalker fundraiser this past week, and thank them for all that they do and for all the figures of this county and for the area. Checked on the finished work by Jesse, the expo maintenance foreman out there. And he was doing some work around the forbidden bathrooms. They did a great job. I want to thank them all and John for, for being there. And then Chief Kirk finalized the storage tank for the water at the sheriff's office. Now, that ring has already been poured. I think the next part is going to be the sand, and then it has to cure for a couple of weeks before this move forward to the tank. And that is to help us in the water crisis in case we get there, so we don't have to transfer any prisoners into different areas of the state. And that will save us a lot of money, so we're being proactive about that. Chiefs, thank you very much for all the hard work you put into it. Appreciate that. And then I attended the Chalking for Mental Health here at the courthouse ground. It was very well-attended. There's lots of folks here, and they had, looked like they had a great time the whole, the time they were here. I don't know if I must say raised, but they did really well. Then we came to Commissioners' Court Disaster Declaration to support the city of Beville. And I think our Dan Zor is here to give us a little update in a bit. And then we had our regular B Development Authority meeting out there at Chase Field. And one of the main ones was, items on there was, we had, we listened to the concerned ranchers in the area on the Navy's Touch and Go. They're starting to do a lot of Touch and Go out there. They're having some concerns, so they came out to speak with us, so we're still, we're still discussing that item. I had a Zoom meeting with Kamatsu for our courthouse restoration, and we met with the consultants. Got a good look at the next step for the courthouse. You know, our courthouse is, we take a look around, it needs some help. So we're working on that right now. I attended the Golden Trojan Breakfast at the A C Jones High School. That was really, really well-attended. A big shout-out to their culinary arts. They provided breakfast for everybody out there. Those kids do a fantastic job of serving, and Commissioner Oliveris joined us out there, and he was, I mean, he was great, very, very good.
What is Golden Trojan?
Golden Trojan is somebody that's over 45.
Whoa.
You might have.
I wasn't sure.
Thanks for that. So you're a Golden Trojan?
I am. Thank you. Congratulations. I get the, I got a free pass to get in all the home gates now, you know, so I can.
Everybody is 45?
Yeah.
That's awesome. You okay?
I'll get you a pass again. Then after that, we met with the BEIC. The B Development Authority was trying to secure some funding for our MASH grant for the live station. And BEIC was very generous, and they helped us out with a good portion of our matching funds for that. And that's coming up next. As soon as the government opens up, we will get our letter so we can move forward. Checked on the courthouse elevator, and it's not working too good. But, I think it's still in there. But they're working on that now, see if we can get that working correctly. So I would take the stairs if you're going to go upstairs and see the judge. I would, I would use the stairs. The boiler here at the courthouse is about 95% complete. They're working out there today, so we should have a brand-new boiler system for the courthouse here by the end of the month. And that was one piece that hadn't been touched in over 20 years, so we're looking forward. Hopefully, we get that piece going really, really well. Finished the carpet installation at the District Attorney's Office, and that looks very well, so double up there. Take a look at that job that was done by, by J L's work. And then working on storage tank number two at the E O C. We're beginning to work on that part of the project for the water storage tank. And thank you, Commissioner, for digging up, helping out with that. I was a little overwhelmed there for a bit. And then that is, I'm going to pass to Commissioner Dewitt.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. That's the thing. We're going to have a safety lesson first. If you're operating equipment for the metal fuel tank, and that fuel tank's near the muffler, that fuel gets hot enough to boil. Whatever you do, you have to take the cap off. This happened in Mineral to a fellow named Oscar Sanchez Jr. He suffered pretty severe burns. As he took the cap off, first came out the aerosol, then the actual fuel came out at the green skin. We didn't call that our. We're okay, not in good shape, but they're having a event at fundraiser for him in Pettus at the Comedian Park, November 9th. 11 o'clock, and if you'd like to donate, they have no insurance. He's the law chair firefighter. He's the assistant manager of the municipal district there. If you'd like to donate, leave your donation there to the municipal office. They would appreciate anything possible. So be very, very careful when you're operating around equipment and gasoline or diesel, because that fuel gets hot. And it will start boiling, it will start bubbling in that tank. Because what I understand is yet under light check, and they had a hard time getting the top off. Well, it's so much pressure, and we took the top off, and the fuel can't lose it. So be very, very careful. We're going to have, Mr. Frank Massey's here today to talk about some exciting developments for the Screwworm Facility that we're trying to get to B County. And I want to direct y'all's attention to the latest Parks and Wildlife Magazine. It has an article, "Home to Screwworm Fly." And it talks about the fly, first experiments on this fly were done here in Texas. And they used an X-ray machine from a dentist's office on these flies. Trying to figure out what was going on. And they were ridiculed. They said it's never going to work, da-da-da-da. What happened, when they focused radiation on the pupae, the little worms, the males became sterile. Okay, according to the article, the males, once they grow the flies and they fly them, the males will breed in time. The female Screwworm Fly will only breed once. Okay, if they breed with a sterile male, the eggs are no good. And that's how they stopped the Screwworm infestation here before in Texas. And I think it was completely eradicated, I think according to the article, since 1966. So some of y'all remember the Screwworms that we had? Those of us that grew up during that time period, it was bad. If you had a young calf or a deer or something, it was immediately, they call it de-lawn. They put a female fly, they lay eggs on it, and a few days, a magus would hatch out and start eating the animals. But we don't want that back in Texas. And I appreciate Mr. Massey being here. He has done a fantastic amount of work. He's going to brief us on what's going on. It's pretty exciting. I'm teeing up, kind of getting everybody ready for your talk, so we'll look forward to seeing and hearing that. Met with the Pettus Municipal District and the folks that Mr. Oliveris was talking about with the grant. I want to compliment our archer's office, Miss Frances Melvin, is our grant writer. She was there on-site with us. There were three or four people from the state that were there with this grant. It was very important that we be there, that Commissioner Oliveris was there to meet with these people. It makes a difference when you're dealing with the state folks, if you're there on-site with them. Something that, that came up that's interesting, though, everything's going along smooth, but the soonest they could turn dirt, what, '26 or '27?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. And, and it's like every other grant, you got to get it in the pipeline, and it takes a lot to get there, but you got to go. And my appreciation goes to Miss Melvin for being there. She did a great job. She battled through the whole process, told them what we needed. The folks from the municipal district were there also. It was a good, a very good meeting. We have some folks here that own the daycare. I think they made herself known a while ago. They're going to be talking to the court during the closing session, so I'll tee it up for them before we get here. They want to talk to the court about the taxes and tax abatement. One thing I would like to say and to comment, I mean, Commissioners' comments about the tax abavements, unless the court changes, there's a $1,000 fee to submit the paperwork for tax evasion. Now, the last time we did that, and the archer will, will remember this, the company that came in gave us a $1,000 check before they left, and they didn't get the abatement. I think the Venus got hurt because the check bounced. How many times? Twice? Anyway, there is a $1,000 fee, and the paperwork required takes a lot of county time. And it's supposed to be, judge, it's supposed to be renovated, renewed every five or six years. I don't think that's happened. So if they're wanting to go forward with this, that's what's going to have to happen. Okay, I had the privilege of being in, go ahead, this last week, Governor Abbott was there. It was a peace officer meeting. He was there to present a certificate to Larry Busby, the sheriff over in Cleveland County, longest-serving sheriff in Texas, period. And in just one or two more years, he's going to be the longest-serving sheriff in the entire United States. So if y'all know Sheriff Busby, tell him hello and congratulate him. It was well-attended. It was fantastic. The governor was there. The board of control was there. ICE was there. The sheriffs from all over the country were there. It was excellent. It was fantastic. I would like to compliment Commissioner Parias, Commissioner Oliveris, and our chief deputy, Russell Kirk, for the work they've been doing on getting an emergency water system set up for the jail and Emergency Management Center. They've done all of the work, and it started, I think, Mr. Kirk started all this. Think about, okay, with a way over one, y'all are all in charge of a jail with 150 prisoners. Can you run out of water? What do you do? What do you do? You've got 150 people you're responsible for, and you're out of water. Well, they came up with the idea, let's put in a water storage tank. They got T C Q down, got their blessing. I think it's about 45,000 gallons when we get through with it, something like that here. Emergency Management Center, think about the emergency. It's there for emergency. We've got a whole line of showers, for feet-to-face showers. We've got extra restaurants, a whole nine yards. And guess what? The last time the city ran out of water, we didn't have water out there. You couldn't have used any of it. So one of these tanks is going to go in at the Emergency Management Center, right here in the back of the parking lot. So if you go by the jail, if you go by Emergency Management, you'll see it putting a ring around it, talking about the tank that's going to go in. And I want to compliment these people for the projects they've done, especially Commissioner Parias and Commissioner Oliveris. They have never hesitated to jump in, get a project going, followed it all the way through. Feature was completed the way it was supposed to. You've heard them talking about the work this has gone under, the old, the old sheriff's office in jail. Commissioner Oliveris is back there, he's an engineer, so he knows what should be done and shouldn't be done. He knows the paperwork. He knows how to talk to contractors. Commissioner Parias, I don't know where he got all this knowledge on construction, but this guy is doing stuff everywhere, in the Justice Center, carpet, roofs. Fantastic. So gentlemen, I want to totally lead a round of applause for that.
Thank you, sir.
Judge, with that, I will pass to my right.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
All right. Good morning. As Commissioner Parias said, it has been a busy two weeks. I was invited by the former county judge, Stephen Miranda, to attend the 2025 Eagle Ford Shill Excellence Award run by South Texas Energy and Economic Roundtable and the Texas Bowling Gas Association, and then played in their golf tournament. And that was a well-attended event. Lots of people showed up for that. The tournament and the meeting. Also, I was asked to be a judge for the costume contest at the animal shelter. That was interesting. There was a lot of people showed up for that. Thank you to the city for asking me to do that. St. Mary's reached out to me to put on a movie night just past Saturday, and that, too, was, we probably had 50, 60 people show up to that. And it was, it was a great, great night. Just like the other commissioners, I also attended the Chalking for Mental Health at the courthouse and volunteered my time to help out with them at the 5K or the 3K run, 5K run. And everything they had to do up here at the courthouse, so up here all, all day. Took care of some issues for a couple, for some folks at a couple of cemeteries. They reached out to me. There were a couple of issues going on, and so I reached out there to both of the cemeteries. Took care of that for them. And attended the Pawnee Volunteer Fire Department fundraiser barbecue. There, there was a lot of people. I think they ordered enough food to do like 300 to 400 plates. And to my knowledge, they sold out, so good job. And then Road and Bridge, thank you, guys. They picked up some illegal dumping on Henry Lane, some patching on King Gria, and mowing. And they're waiting on some material to come in to patch up holes on the Pata Road and County Road 343, 344. And then also, the city reached out to me again, and they want to do, this next Saturday, do another movie night right across from the city hall of the April Kalasus Center. So we'll be doing that this coming Saturday. With that, I'll pass back to Judge. Thank you all very much for those detailed reports. It's very interesting. Appreciate your praise and delight. Good work, Charlotte County, and good work that other members of the county are doing for everybody. So, so I don't have any opening remarks. So Agenda Item Number Six, public comment. We're honored to be, be in the presence today of our, not, she's not new, but she's new to B County after a recent redistricting by the State House this summer call. B County is in a different congressional district, and it's a distinct honor and pleasure, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate you making the effort and taking the time to come and visit with us this morning. Congressman Monica DeLa Cruz from the 15th District of Texas.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Judge, and thank you, Commissioners, for being so warm and your welcome to me. This is the start of a beautiful relationship. warm, and you're welcome to me. This is the start of a beautiful relationship with B County. Again, I am Congresswoman Monica DeLaCruz, and I represent the fifteenth congressional district of Texas in Washington, D.C., and have had that honor for two terms. With redistricting, I will then become your Congresswoman in the next cycle, which will be the hundred and twentieth Congress, beginning January twenty-twenty-six. Because we're twenty-twenty-five, twenty-seven, actually, twenty-seven. So, about a year away, but this district is ninety percent new, so there's a lot of new faces to me. And really, what I wanted to do was to A, make an initial introduction, but B, find out what's important to you all, so that when we enter January twenty-twenty-seven, I can focus on the key areas that are important to you. I heard a couple things that stand out right away, but before I get started, I want to introduce two very important people from my team. And that's first, my chief of staff, right here, Karen Navarro, and she works with me in Washington, D.C., and travels into Texas with me as well. And then District Director Ruben Villarreal, if you will please stand. You'll see a lot of Director Villarreal, because he's the one who travels the entire district. There are several things. I know we're going to work very well together. First for STPRA, Susan Kibbe is a great supporter of mine, as has been your organization, so I thank you for that. I've worked very closely with you all on several property rights issues, including screwworm. And so I sit on Agriculture Committee, and that is something very, very important to me. I'd like to talk about a couple things that I've done. I have large farming and ranching communities, so I've worked with the Secretary of State, the Trade Secretary, the Secretary of Agriculture, Secretary Rawlins, to hold the Mexican government accountable through the nineteen forty-four Water Treaty, and make sure they deliver to us the water that they owe us, which, with the pressure that we've had from President Trump, we've been able to get a year's worth of water in six months. Never been done before. But the second thing that you all mentioned several times is screwworms. Screwworm is my specialty and where I have done the most work. And so I've worked very closely with Secretary Rawlins and the president's office to get the sterile fly facility at Moore Air Base in Mission, Texas. That's the front line of the border of where the screwworm will come. That was an eight-point-five-million-dollar investment that we worked exceptionally hard to get. After we got the screwworm facility in Mission, I worked with the governor's office, and I'm very proud to say that we have an investment of seven-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars into the Moore Air Base Center. So this is unprecedented amount. It's something that we're working extremely hard with the Secretary of Agriculture, and I want to give you some peace of mind, because I've spoken with ranchers like Mr. McCallan, Mr. Guerra, among many more, that have talked about the devastation that happened. If you lived through that time, that was devastating to our cattle industry. Well, we are dropping a hundred million flies in Mexico, and it's a hundred million a week in Mexico. And within the next couple of months, we will be dropping three-hundred-million sterile flies out of Moore Air Base in Mission, again into Mexico, reinforcing our efforts. In the last three weeks, we have not seen any gain of distance towards the Texas-Mexico border from the screwworm that is headed this way. That is a huge improvement, because they were only seventy miles away, and we've been able to keep them seventy miles away. So we're working around the clock, USCA is working around the clock to make sure that this screwworm does not come over here and devastate our cattle industry. There's a lot of things I'll mention. We do, we've been able to get over twelve-million-dollar in constituent, twelve-million dollars in constituent services for our people. Now, I'll say that again, that's twelve-million dollars to people like you all who've had problems with Social Security, IRS, among many others. And lastly, I'm known on the Hill as the federal grant support letter queen. So I've been able to get millions of dollars of new money to everybody from our municipalities, to our cops program, to our firefighters, among many other infrastructure programs as well. So again, I'm Congresswoman Monica DeLaCruz, and I look forward to the honor of serving you all in the near future. And you guys will see me around here in B County. Looking forward to get to know you. God bless you all.
Thanks, ma'am. We know you have a very busy schedule. I know you need to leave, but once again, thank you so much for your presence here today and your comments.
Absolutely.
If I could just, you could wait this long enough to hear Mr. Massey's presentation, if you're related to the screwworms and the idea that we have that you may not know about.
Okay, wonderful. Yes, I would be happy to. Yes, absolutely. And Susan and I are very close. Like I said, I've been endorsed by STPRA, so we can definitely connect as well through Susan.
Thank you for including us and her name in your conversation. We think we're all of her. She has very good state credentials.
Yes.
People like you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again. Mr. Massey, were you gonna make a comment?
Sure.
You'd like to move down next.
Stand here. I'm walking to my.
I'll refer you to the mic.
Well, for the record, I'm Frank Massey. I reside in B County, out in the mineral area. I'm a rancher. I'm a retired builder, and I'm also retired from a Fortune 500 company a few years ago, and it seems like retirement didn't suit me, so here we go. I have had conversations personally, individually, with just about everybody here on the bench. And by the way, let me back up and say thank you. Good morning, Your Honor and commissioners. Thank you for giving me the minute, a minute to update this program. So I am a board director for South Texas Property Rights Association, and I'm also on the State Beef Commodity Committee for Texas Farm Bureau. And that puts me out and about, all around the state, attending meetings. And the current issue that's really the hot topic is new world screwworms. And so it seemed that everywhere I went, I was, I could have been in the same car with the Texas Department of Animal Health folks, with Dr. Dingus and Dr. Lansford, and also with Texan Parks and Wildlife. So I made the joke that if you guys can't make the meeting, just send me your slides. I can gladly make the presentation. But in setting these presentations, it occurred to me that, gosh, these people are looking for ways to get ahead of the new world screwworm. And I thought, God, if they could just see all the equipment that's already paid for, all the issues, all the things we have at Chase Field. We have land. We have water. We have buildings. We have Willing County. You know, what a great place. The airfield is just the biggest asset we have. We have the ability, if we could produce screwworm flies, sterile screwworm flies, we could have them to the border in thirty, forty minutes, opposed to a four-hour flight from Panama. Currently, the only place in the world that produces sterile new worm, new world screwworm flies is at the COPEC facility that's jointly owned by USDA and the country of Panama. Since the government's closed this last three weeks, we're not sure what else is happening in Panama. But beside that, it just seemed like a no-brainer that we could offer up our local facilities to jumpstart this program. So I fed the idea to Commissioner DeWitt. He shared it with some of you guys. We brought in Randy Sykes. We brought in B Development and Corporation. We made joint presentations to the House Ag Committee in Austin during the first session and during the special session. We've not had anybody tell us it was a bad idea. So I don't mean to step on Congress ladies' toes here, but you indicated that you would have a hundred and twenty-five million screwflies ready to go in what length of time?
No, they're already. Mexico has a facility. It is in full production, and we're already dropping a hundred million flies right now.
Well, I don't want to get, stand here and argue with you, but I spoke with the Ag Minister last week, and that has not happened. So...
We'll get together.
So the timing, the timing is the issue. So that's where we're ahead of the game. We think that we can, we have brought in the people who actually built the COPEC facility in Panama, Vaughn Construction. They've been out to Chase Field with us. We've done a study. We've come up with a cost estimate. We've had Texas A&amp;M do a white page, so they could tell us how much it would cost to build it and to run it. The only drawback to that is that recently, that Hangar 26th, where we were gonna convert, we thought about converting, was leased to Mr. Villarreal, who's building electric vehicles out there. He had an option through August 31st on that building. When he heard, got wind that we were thinking about putting screwworm facility in there, he exercised his option. We sat and visited with him for a couple hours, trying to figure out how we could still use the building, and he's not opposed to it, except that he wants to be a partner, a profiting partner in the endeavor. So currently, we've moved to a Plan B operation. We contacted ConocoPhillips. They have the old closed Pioneer Plant out near Pawnee. It's been vacant for about five years. Conoco got that building when they bought the, Conoco bought it from, who was it, Dennis, that, somebody bought it from Pioneer first. But anyway, so it's a nice facility. It's only about ten years old. We contacted ConocoPhillips. They met us there. We did a tour of the building. We brought Vaughn Construction in. They have digitized the plans, and they've figured out what it's gonna cost.
Excuse me. I'm so sorry, but I have to be at City Hall ten minutes ago. I'm gonna contact Susan for your number, so that we can get in contact and see how we might be able to work together.
Leave your card on the desk. I'll get it to you.
Yes, sir. We sure did. Thank you. God bless you all. Bye-bye.
So currently, we're looking at Plan B. Vaughn Construction has been there. We've digitized, they have digitized the plans. I talked to Vaughn Construction on Friday. They were in a meeting that we had with, in Austin, with Commissioner Sid Miller. And we should have the exact cost or a pretty close cost analysis ready this week. So I jumped ahead by talking about Sid Miller. We visited with him on Friday. We had a thirty-minute meeting that lasted into an hour and a half. Mr. Miller gave us his blessing. He wanted to know what he could do to help us. He says that we and he are the only people in the state of Texas who are currently doing anything from a state-based effort. Everybody else is waiting on the USDA to do something, and they're not moving fast. I'm sorry to tell you that I will correct Congress lady's, Congresswoman's statement about making screwworm flies available next week. That's not happening. They haven't turned the first shovel of dirt. So anyhow, so back to Sid Miller. He gave us the contact information in the Department of Agriculture to start applying for grants. The president of our organization is there this week, working with that lady. They're gonna identify which grants are available, how we can make those work for our project at the Pioneer Plant. Next week, we have a meeting with Don Buckingham and Commissioner Buckingham and Railroad Commission, Commissioner Jim Wright. With his connections with Conoco, we are gonna see if we can't get Conoco maybe to donate that building to either the, to B County, or to Texas A&amp;M, or the Texas Department of Animal Health Commission. But whichever way the wind blows, one of those organizations can help us move this project through. So we believe we can be producing a hundred and twenty-five million sterile blowflies in under a year here in B County. If that happens, then Dynamic Aviation, who currently has the contract with USDA to transport flies from Panama into South America or into Mexico, and eventually into Texas when they get here, they've already been out to Chase Field. They love it. They'd like to move their hub of operations here. So they'll be coming in, flying the flies out for us. So Chase Field will get fuel sales. They'll get, you know, mechanics on duty. They'll have plane storage. They may not, they may not get the, you know, the facility for screwworm development, fly development, but they will get some residual. You know, the airfields are one of our biggest assets here. Let's utilize it. So anyway, I've kind of stumbled through this, but there's been a lot of moving parts. We've got a lot of people involved. We've got Vaughn Construction, who I told you built the actual facility in Panama, and their sister company, ISI, are the people who built Alligator Alcatraz. They're on board with us, and they have the ability to build things quickly. We believe we can have a production facility, along with a training program. We've also brought Texas A&amp;M into this equation. We think that, quite possibly, that Extension may be able to run it for us. Either way, whoever can do this for us, we're open to help. But here's the bottom line, guys. Wouldn't five hundred more jobs look great for B County? And it takes five hundred people to currently run the COPEC plant in Panama. They run that plant around the clock in three shifts, and it takes them five hundred people. Five hundred people would be a great boost to our economy. So thank you for your interest. Thank you for letting me run around behind the scenes. Just keep your ears open, and if we need somebody to help us supply for that grant money, we may be knocking on your door. It's quite obvious they're not gonna, the state's not gonna give Frank Massey or STPRA a hundred million dollars or fifty million dollars, but B County, they might. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. Appreciate your interest. You're helping some of our community and the larger issue of, Mr. Dorgan, apologies. Thank you for coming.
All right. Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Daniel Dorgan. I'm the interim city manager for the city of Beeville. Good morning, Judge, commissioners. Thank you so much. As many of you know, the city has issued our declaration of emergency in mid-October of twenty-twenty-five and entered stage four of our drought contingency plan, the most severe and restrictive stage of our plan. The city appreciates the support from B County. I believe last week, you also followed suit with the declaration of emergency for the county. Just as for the public and just for public knowledge in the audience, for anyone looking for more details on the water restrictions, as far as watering and frequently asked questions, we do have a website, beevillewater.com. So there's a dashboard there, and you can look at all the different items we have on there as well. In September of this year, the city of Beeville issued a thirty-three-point-nine-million-dollar certificate of obligation bond, as well as a two-point-one-million-dollar tax note to help pay for the construction of an additional well, as well as the rehabbing of the two existing wells in town. Just recently, last week, city council authorized the city manager to select a construction company, direct select, which in that sense means that, you know, the competitive bid process is, you know, not, you know, the city doesn't have to follow those rules under the declaration of emergency from Governor Abbott's declaration earlier this year. Council also approved a three-point-nine-million-dollar work order with Garver Engineering to continue the design and the engineering of the construction of the additional well, as well as the rehab of the two existing wells. Once we have a construction manager under contract, we'll be ready to move full steam ahead. My thought is to have that on a council agenda, hopefully early November of next month. According to our engineers' timeline, the two existing wells that we have in town that we're going to be rehabbing, they each can produce roughly seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons per day, which gives us roughly one-point-five-million dollars, I'm sorry, million gallons from just those two wells. In addition, drilling one additional well, it's gonna be drilled about two thousand feet. It's gonna go down to the Jasper Aquifer, and we can produce roughly about two million gallons. So in total, that'll give us about three-point-five-million gallons, which is roughly our daily average use for the city of Beeville. As far as our timeline is concerned, very aggressive timeline. We're looking at, to have all this, the construction, hopefully, starting and mobilizing by the end of the year here, twenty-twenty-five, and then we can have the conveyance system, the pumps, and all the construction of the wells and rehab wells completed by the end of February. So we should have, hopefully, the goal is to have water being into our system by the end of February of twenty-twenty-six. Now, also too, what that comes with, we're gonna have to potentially... February of 2026. Now also too, what that comes with, we're gonna have to potentially purchase, uh, rental RO skid systems because it takes roughly four to six months to design and construct the permanent RO system. So we're looking, uh, at different companies to get a, a rental, um, this, a rental skid for each of the two, uh, two locations of the existing well, and then the drilling of the, the new, brand-new well in town. So we're gonna be looking at three, uh, rental skids, uh, reverse osmosis skids, uh, moving forward. Uh, just in addition to, I know there's a lot of questions out there about our water wells and whether, you know, you're able to, you know, purchase, you know, the permit for it as well as drill water wells. And so you, you are, uh, but also we are going to be amending our ordinance to make sure that we have, you know, equal across the board as far as is it an irrigation well versus is, is it a, you know, drinkable potable well as, as far as also to making sure our permit fees are at the tier system as far as residential use, uh, commercial users and industrial users as well. Just making sure we're equitable across the board. So, um, as far as that, you know, I'm, I'm open for any questions, but we are moving very quickly and we understand that, you know, the lake levels are not getting any better. As you all know, as, as of late, the water, you know, the combined lake levels between Lake Corpus Christi and Choke Canyon Lake are under 12%. And so, um, you know, we're working closely with Corpus Christi as well. I know they have had a lot of action, you know, on their end as far as trying to drill well, wellfields and, and whatnot for, for their city as well. So, um, we do have, uh, meetings with them every week. So they, they provide us, you know, updates, uh, from the city of Corpus Christi Water as well. So be happy to answer any questions or comments from.
Can I ask any questions or comments, Mr. Dorgan? Thank you so much. You're incredible. So thank you for taking your time out to provide us with an update.
Absolutely.
Be more than happy to get a future agenda for availability.
Sure.
Uh, for any, to fish on the agenda.
Absolutely.
And, uh, I think we did take more time, but I feel very confident. I know it's a scary time for everybody that's, uh, in the city and, uh, in some places. I feel very confident, uh, with, with the efforts that we've seen also by, uh, exerting, uh, to today's date and, uh, looking forward to seeing, being able to succeed, carrying out your plan and also these, uh, these dire situations upon ourselves. So thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Now it's all just gonna be fun, public comment from here on out, right? Uh, we do have other individuals who, uh, indicated they, they'd like to address Commissioners Court this morning. I have a list of two individuals. If there's more after I call these two, uh, then just raise your hand and I'll, uh, I'll get you up here. The first one would be Mr. Ron Crenn. Hey, Mr. Crenn.
Crenn.
Crenn. My apologies, Mr. Crenn.
That's all right.
I went to high school with a guy named John Crenn.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, but it was spelled difficult. Being Crenn.
Well, if you ever run any, any of mine, they're mine. They belong to me. I'm gonna hand you all out, uh, the deal here, uh, the pricing and the math and, uh, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead. I'm gonna keep one myself to show you. I already get this gentleman, which is probably has someone and this one I can show. Forgive me. So, uh, my name is Ron Crenn. I'm from, from Losa Water Supply Corporation. I'm the general manager. Uh, the gentleman with me, Buddy Kerlik, is our treasurer and the director of our board. And this is, uh, I think I mentioned last time, we serve five counties with water and water is critical and water is life. And we are, we have about 900 miles of pipe in the ground. Uh, that's about drive from here to Tulsa, Oklahoma. So we have a lot of, a lot of pipes. This, uh, this particular one in your county, we're applying to the county for a grant and through the county, uh, for this about two and a half miles of pipe. The map here that shows all the, the pin marks on it, those are all the leaks we've had and they're dated. Most of them are in 2025. If you want to look, it's about two and a half miles of pipe. And it goes to Pawnee, Texas, and we serve a school up there. And so far, we've been very fortunate not to run out of water. We had once where we had to close the school one time because it just got, we just couldn't get there fast enough. Every time this line leaks, we lose between 200 and 500,000 gallons of water. Because it's rural, it's in Ranch County. We get there as fast as we can. Our workers are very good. They actually know where to look and what valves to listen to, what meters to look at to see where the water's going. Uh, this is a critical, this is a critical line and we want to upgrade it to an eight inch and we want to move it up toward rate point, uh, from there. Not all of it is in, in your county. A little bit's outside of it, but 98% of it's in your county. So we want to apply, as you can see the price tag for this is over $2 million, $2.6 million, uh, because we have a lot of gates and roads that we have to bore under and whatnot. Uh, we're gonna apply for whatever we can get through the county. Uh, we looked at, um, a couple of grants already. Uh, some are, are outstretched. This is a little closer. We need to get a closer date. They're out to 2027, the federal grant. So we're looking to get it as soon as possible. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them if I can.
You can. I'm sorry, Mr. Crenn, but I appreciate, really appreciate the effort, um.
We're gonna be talking, we have an agenda, Adam. He can, we can talk to him then.
Don't go anywhere. Just have a seat.
All right.
We'll pick you up at the next agenda, at the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Crenn.
Yes, sir.
Uh, next individual on, uh, public comment that I have, uh, is Buddy Kirk Kerlik.
I don't have, I'm with Ron.
Oh, okay. So I'll take you off then. Is there anybody else you'd like to address? Yes, sir. Please come down.
All right. So my name is William Miller and, um, I'm from Brownsville, Texas. Some of these names are wrong, but you can just take one and pass it down. And this is a package. Today I'm gonna be talking to you about game rooms. Exciting. Just for everybody, one, two, three.
One more.
One more.
Get yours. One more. I need one more. I mean, I don't need it.
Well, sure you do. Yes, you do. Absolutely.
And here's some, here's, here's a business card.
Do you need that one?
Yeah, I need that one. Here's some business cards. And I apologize, I just have two of these business cards, but here are my ranch cards here. You can pass those out as well. Okay, so.
Feels awful thick, Judge.
Believe it or not, my family is from Beeville, Texas.
All right.
Okay, about 10 years ago, um, first off, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a nerd. I'm not very good at public, you know, speaking. So you guys just kind of bear with me a little bit. But about 10 years ago, we started, um, what's called 47 compliant gaming. And in 10 years, because our system is completely compliant, and there is a way to play this compliantly, it's just very involved and very difficult, Governor Abbott signed into law House Bill 892. And House Bill 892 gives counties the authority to regulate game room activity, which means you can charge for it now. And, and what people don't realize is 892 is very broad and very open. You've pretty much been given carte blanche to make as much money as you can, right? But in return for that, you need to make sure that this system is compliant. Well, what I've created is a software called 47 RED and RED stands for redemption. And that forces compliance from player to employee to owner. It's impossible to inject any kind of outside money in the system. It's impossible to be non-compliant and it just works and it runs well and it's been operating for over 10 years. Now, um, and it's not that difficult. I can show you how the system works, but if you want, we can go through this little quick presentation. And in here, you're gonna have three things, right? You're gonna have three things to look at. The first one is a briefing called Bee County 47 Compliant Amusement Ordinance Briefing, right? And we can go over that or I'm going to go through this so you can see it. The next thing you'll see in there is the Bee County 47 Compliant Entertainment Gaming Permit Application. And if you'll look at this, it's basically blank, but the 47 RED system handles all of that for the county and the Sheriff's Department. It's automatic. The work has been done. Okay? And then of course, the third thing in here is a copy of Bee County Commissioners Court 47 Compliant Amusement Gaming Facility ordinances. These are, now, you guys have your ordinances in place, but, but I would like you to, to really investigate this because this is 10 years of wisdom of and knowledge of exactly how much money this system can pay back to the county, of what it can truly afford to pay. Right? So, so, and that, this isn't saying do it, don't do it, but there's some things in there that you probably didn't realize or understand. So, executive cover letter. Lone Star Compliance Technologies LLC respectively submits this policy briefing outlining a lawful self-funding framework for the regulation of amusement redemption facilities in Bee County. This ordinance introduces two facility framework. So House Bill 892 and House Bill 4446. Most people don't even realize that House Bill 4040, 4446 is even a thing. And both of these laws, and they're both laws, 892 was set up in 2019. It became effective. 4446 became effective in 2023. And 892 basically says you have the right to, to, to run this game as long as you're playing it compliantly. 4446 basically tells you how to do it. Okay? So when Governor Abbott signed these things, and I promise you, they're laws because of the system. I can give you a sample of right now and there's no other reason for it. He signed these because no longer could, could these illegal ones operate. And people don't understand that there is a real way to operate and a real way for counties to not only gain control of it, but to benefit from it. And the key is control because I'm sure you've seen it right now. There are game rooms popping up here and there and they're all playing it illegally because they don't even realize that there's a, a right way to play this game. There's a legal way to play this game and it's very fun and it benefits all parties. Okay? Um, we can scroll down to the permit allocation and few, future expansion on the next page. And if you'll see down there, there are three scenarios. What I'm proposing in Bee County, because I've run the numbers, um, is that Bee County in 4440, 46, you have the right to limit the number of game rooms. And I highly recommend that happens. And Bee County can handle what I believe is two, no more than two. And we call them Class 1 facilities. And that's between 200 and 400 games and legally they're called contrivances. Okay? And if you can see those numbers, and those are real numbers down there, I promise you, that's not pie in the sky numbers. Those are real numbers that can be, that can be achieved easily. But I'll let you guys go through that at, at your leisure if you want. Um, being this is a public hearing and there's a lot of, um, how do I say it? There's a lot of, um, trade secret stuff that I can't get into. A lot of programming and stuff that makes this work perfectly compliantly that I just can't divulge right here. But in person, be more than happy to show you, um, exactly how it works and exactly where the compliance sits. And if you would like, I'd be more than happy to show you right now a copy of, of how the redemption system works. And really, there's two aspects of the law, 47, that are only applicable to this being compliant. One, you gotta make sure that that game does not pay cash. If you pay cash, you violated the statute. And two, the prize that they're getting has to have a wholesale value of $5 a lap. So those are the only two real things that the county needs to be in charge of to be compliant. And they're not difficult. And my system sets that up for you automatically. So you can play in perpetuity. Everybody can have fun. You limit the game rooms and then come back at a later date and decide, well, do we have room for expansion? Because what, what I believe you don't want to happen is flood this, this county with game rooms. Because remember, everybody's money is predicated on, on this being successful. Right? So, so having a, you know, illegal players all, every place, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't help anybody. Right? And, um, anyway, that's it. If you would like to see this, I'm more than happy to show you right now.
We don't think we have time during public comment.
It's very quick.
Mr. Miller, but I can't tell you how much I appreciate you coming. We have your business cards. Uh, please, before you leave, do, well, we don't have any down here, I'm sure. I was gonna say a business card of mine and he can contact our office. Yeah, uh, Ms. Gomez is gonna grab a business card of mine. Let's get together offline and, and discuss this.
Don't take it easy.
So I, I believe this is very important. This is, counties don't even realize, they don't even realize what the governor has signed. The difference between gambling and this, this 47 compliant gaming, if gambling comes to the state of Texas, and it probably will, right? And it probably will. I hope it does. I have racehorses. And my racehorses are tied directly to every dollar that's bet on gambling. So I'll run for more, more money. But if gambling comes, it's gonna benefit five counties. And let me tell you exactly how it works. I've got friends that own very big casinos. The state's gonna take 12.5% of what's called the hold. The hold is what these machines keep that, that the profits operate out of. Of that 12.5%, the county, the county where this gaming sits is going to get 3%. Let's think about that. This will, legalized gambling is only gonna benefit five counties. That's it. It'll never come to Bee County. Promise you. It'll never come to some of these counties. 892 and 4446 give the opportunity for every single county in the state of Texas to benefit from this and put some real revenue as long as it's played correctly in their pockets.
Thank you again, Mr. Miller. Really appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to address Commissioners Court? Yes, ma'am. And if you'd please identify yourself again for the record and then you may proceed.
Yes. Uh, thank you for letting me join y'all today. My name is Molly DeBoer, owner and director of Little Bud's Daycare here in town across from AC Jones. I'm here to speak on behalf of families, our workforce and local economy and the vital early childhood sector about why Bee County should adopt the property tax exemption for qualified childcare facilities. First, let's clarify what the opportunity is. In November 2023, Texas voters approved Proposition 2, which amended the Texas Constitution by adding Article 8, Section 1R. That amendment provides the governing body of a county or municipality to exempt taxation on all or part of the appraised value of real property used to operate childcare facilities. Uh, the governing body may adopt the exemption as a percentage of the appraised value of the real property. The percentage may not be less than 50%. The legislature, by general law, may define childcare facility and may provide additional eligibility requirements for the exemption authorized by this section. Um, in effect, Section 1R empowers counties and cities to decide to exempt 50 or 100, 50% or more of the appraised value of a qualifying childcare facility. Uh, the following, following that constituent constitutional change, the legislature passed Senate Bill 1145, effective January 2024, which added Tax Code, Section 11.36, outlining the eligibility criteria, which is the property owner or operator must run a licensed childcare facility, participate in Texas Rising Star, which is what the workforce dictates who gets that. They come in and make sure we're following the right, um, standards going above and beyond just a regular childcare facility. Um, and meet the requirement that at least 20% of enrolled children receive the subsidized care through the Texas workforce. Um, why should we do it? The why part. Why is it smart, practical and forward-thinking for Bee County to adopt this? One of our region's challenges is access to quality childcare. When providers face heavy cost burdens like property taxes, building maintenance and staffing, it can reduce capacity, limit hours or force closure. By adopting this exemption, Bee County gives the meaningful incentive for providers to stay, expand or upgrade their facilities. It helps subsidize and grow our childcare infrastructure. We know that working parents need reliable, affordable, high-quality care for their children. If childcare is too expensive or unavailable, parents may reduce their hours, leave their workforce or commute further, all impacting the local productivity. By easing the cost burden on local childcare centers, we would help more parents work, support more local jobs and strengthen our economy. Because the law ties eligibility to participation in Texas Rising Star, the serving families with, and subsidized, and serving families with subsidized care, adopting this exemption encourages providers to raise the quality, serve more children of diverse backgrounds and expand access. This means a better outcome for children and families. This means a better outcome for children and families of B County. By adopting this exemption, B County signals that we value early childhood and the infrastructure that supports our future workforce. It's an investment in our people and our community's long-term health. It also fosters public-private collaboration between the providers and the local government. We'll be working together. Because the law gives the exemption as a local option, the county controls how far to go, between 50 and 100%, how to implement, and what oversight to require. And because it's targeted to quality-rated childcare providers, it ensures the relief goes where it yields the most community benefit. Recently, a local, another local Texas government moved to adopt the property tax exemption under Section 1R, Tax Code 11.36, in Jackson County, that's where I'm from. The local officials recognized the burden on childcare providers and adopted the exemption this year, in June, giving tax relief directly to licensed and quality childcare centers. Their action illustrates how the option can be implemented and support providers, and offer a useful model for us to follow. I printed that in the file, I just didn't make enough copies for everyone, but I can get that to everyone. In conclusion, by adopting the property tax exemption under Section 1R, the Texas Tax Code 1136, B County can make a smart move that encourages and strengthens quality childcare facilities, supports working families and local economy, demonstrates local leadership in early child, and in early childhood investment, and offer targeted relief that aligns with eligibility and accountability. I urge the Commissioners Court to move forward, to set the percentage, and establish a process, and communicate broadly to make sure that our childcare sector in B County is stronger, more reliable, more, stronger, more stable, and better able to serve our children and families.
Thank you, Mr. Board, excellent. Really appreciate this information, and please feel free to reach out to my office, and we can discuss further. Oh, yeah, and you can just leave that with Ms. Sinney. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir, for being here this morning. Best of luck to y'all. Anybody else who wishes to address Commissioners Court? Oh, don't be bashful now.
You haven't started yet?
We haven't even started. We're gonna have to take a bathroom break. Theirs are?
Yeah.
Over, you know, 45% of that's V.I.S.D. Probably I'll start there. Okay. Golly. All right. Moving on, Agenda Item Number 7. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately and less requested by a Commissioner or County Judge.
Move to approve.
I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Just can't do, is anything we need to? No, ma'am. No, I don't.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Discuss and consider action on the following items. No, no, I'm, I'm just trying to, all right, well, we'll just roll through it. Agenda Item Number 8. Approve Regional Public Defender Services Annual Contract Between B County and the Texas Rio Grande Public Defender Table During the October 14th, 2025 Regular Term Meeting. There's been some developments, folks, I'd ask that we take no action on this agenda item, and that's my recommendation. Does anybody wish to take any action on this agenda item?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move on. Agenda Item Number 9. Approved Voting, oh, this is gonna be a long one, too. Approved Voting Resolution to Cast B County's Votes for Appraisal District Board of Directors' Appointments.
Judge, if you would, I have good information that a couple of the entities returned their ballots not marked at all, zeros, no, no, no votes cast, they just returned their ballots.
Interesting maneuver. I don't know what.
I, that's, that's information I got from a reliable source.
Maybe it was an error. Well, we have 1,411 votes, and for the, for the folks in attendance, and those that may be watching, your B County Appraisal District is not a county entity, it's an arm of the state of Texas. If you're upset about your valuations, complain to the state. However, all taxing jurisdictions within B County do have a certain number of votes by which they can cast for the members of the Board of Directors of the B County Appraisal District. B County has 1,411 votes, we can apportion them amongst various candidates, we can lump them all in one candidate. There are six nominees, those nominees were nominated by the taxing jurisdictions earlier this month, and those nominees, of which most are the current sitting directors of the B County Appraisal District, are King Fuller, Ernest Hurst Jr., Michael Keeney, Paul Looney, Paul San Miguel, and Jess Staples. So, at this time, I'm going to open the floor, by that I just mean us, not y'all, for discussion on how to apportion our 1,411 votes, and hopefully, we can find a coalescing, ah, forget it.
Judge, if you would, I, I know two members on there that have done a really good job, is Mr. Looney and Mr. Staples. I think, I, I know we talked about not splitting our votes, but at this point in time, I'd like to move 1,000 votes to Mr. Looney and 411 to Mr. Staples, and that's just on the table.
Okay. Anybody else have any other concepts, thoughts, ideas? This is, this would be the time for us to discuss.
I just, I don't have any feedback from some of the other board members. I'm assuming their role has been working well, and they're functioning as their purpose, I hope, but I've not gotten any official feedback to see if there was any issues or not, so. And, and last time, I believe, they all came and, they were here, expressed their, their wanting to be on the board, so I didn't see that this time around, unless something changed.
At the last election, there was a big change, a mix-up led by some community folks to replace the board with different board members. As a result of that, I'm, I'm really only aware of one big change, they moved away from Pritchard Knappett and to a new appraisal company, because your county appraisal district, and this is a dig against the B County Appraisal District, it's full of fine individuals, and I, I'm a big fan of our chief appraiser, Deb Castaldo, I think she's done a yeoman's job and worked very, very hard under difficult circumstances, and she has the vim and vigor to stick around. Our prior, we had one for a long time, and then we had some for very short periods of time. But the long and, and, and short of it is, there are only a couple entities that actually engage in the, in the appraisal process. One of them is Pritchard Knappett, one of the other ones is whoever the new company is, so I just don't know off the top of my head. Your Board of Directors is very important, because they're making board-level decisions such as which appraisal entity your appraisal district is actually going to use, and, by the way, that is the vast majority of the cost for operating the appraisal district, which is not an inconsequential amount of money that all taxing jurisdictions have to pay to support this state agency. Please, you have the floor.
No, thank, thank you, Judge. I guess the, the question is, you know, all the votes for two individuals, I mean, should the votes be split, distributed? I'm looking, looking for some feedback.
So, we can do whatever we want. At the end of the day, the top, I, I believe it's five, right?
I think so.
The top, the, the top five vote recipients will make up the new board. So, if, if a taxing jurisdiction casts no votes, well, that just increases the, the impact of our 1,411 votes. If we were to apportion equally across all six candidates, our 1,411 votes, we would do, in effect, the exact same thing as not voting at all.
That's correct.
So, I, I, you know, I, I think Mr. Looney, he's served for a long time in that capacity, I think he'd be a good addition. Mr. Staples has been great. Paul San Miguel is somebody that we put on a couple of years ago. I, I do think apportioning some, some votes to Paul San Miguel would show our continuing support of his efforts on behalf of B County.
Absolutely.
I've also known King for, for decades, and he's served in, on this board for several years, and I think he's done a, a good job. So, I wouldn't have any objection to apportioning some votes to him as well.
I think.
But there's a motion on the floor, though, right?
No, there's no motion on the floor, it's just discussion.
It was just discussion, it was discussion.
I wouldn't mind seeing apportioning King Fuller, Paul Looney, Paul San Miguel, and Jess Staples, you know, equally.
I think Paul Looney's not on the board yet.
Oh, but he's, he's a candidate?
Right.
So, maybe he's somebody that we'd like to, and he, he was on the board prior.
He did an excellent job.
And he did, he, he really, he's, he's led that board, he's got a lot of experience doing that, and he's interested in getting back in. So, if we wanted to apportion a disproportionate amount of support for Mr. Looney, might assist him in getting over the line and unseating one of the incumbents, as far as Mr. San Miguel, Mr. Fuller, Mr. Staples, an apportionment amongst them, I think, would be good, but it should be meaningful, maybe it's a drop Mr. Looney down to 800, increase the balance to 611, and apportion them either equally or unequally, as the will of the court dictates.
That sounds good.
Probably equally, Judge, I would agree with that.
800, 611 would work for me, Judge.
Okay, so, I'm glad somebody has a piece of paper out, all I have it is electronically.
There you go.
Well, but.
But you wanna portion the balance?
They all get a portion.
Do 800 for Mr. Lenny.
Okay, split.
So, 2, 4, 6.
2.
And 11. I'm so bad at this, it's really embarrassing.
200, 200, and 211.
Carry the 1, and.
211.
Divide by 2. Okay.
200, 800, 211, 200.
Okay, so, in the, in the, you wanna make this a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we allocate 200 votes for King Fuller, 800 votes for Paul Looney, 211 votes for Paul San Miguel, and 200 votes for Jess Staples.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Appreciate everybody's input in this regard, and thank you, Commissioner DeWitt, for, for mocking it up for us. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, will be done about 4 o'clock this afternoon at this rate. Agenda Item Number 10. Approve B County burn ban order of Mr. Garza's present. We spoke, I think, last week, you had been in touch with all of the fire chiefs, the vast majority of the fire chiefs are on board, that this is a prudent move at this time. Is that still the case? I don't believe we've had any deluge.
No, we haven't had any rain, and we did have one fire that was negligence on somebody burning, garbage left in the neighborhood, so it's, it's getting there.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. I entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second.
Effective immediately?
Yes, sir, it will be. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Garza. Agenda Item Number 11. Approve Agenda Management System Software Proposal for Commissioners Court. And we don't have Mrs. Estrada here this morning.
Trying to park, as we speak.
Is she?
Parking lot is full, but she is trying to park us.
I am extremely confused on this, Judge.
Yeah, let's, let's, I'm, I'm gonna call another agenda item, we'll come back to Agenda Item Number 11 when Mrs. Estrada is present. Agenda Item Number 12, you've been so patient, ma'am, thank you. Approved Request From the Beville Garden Club To Conduct Veterans Day Ceremony On The West Side Of The Courthouse Grounds On Tuesday, November 11th, 2025. Commissioner DeWitt, this is your agenda item, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir, a motion to approve, and setting out the chairs like we normally do, and opening the restrooms.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Ma'am, it, it's not necessary that you provide any presentation, but I certainly don't wanna cut, cut you off, if you'd like to give us any razzle-dazzle.
I just want to invite everyone. It's 11:11 at 11 o'clock.
November 11th at 11 o'clock, please come out, it's a wonderful event, we so appreciate y'all.
Very brief, very brief, but we have a, we'll tease that, we have a very special presentation that we're making this year that affects this community, and so, I do invite you to come and see what that is. Thank you so much.
Excellent, thank you very much.
And we also supply the podium out there, Judge.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir, of course. Thank you, Ms. LaRoche. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number, I'm gonna pass on that one, 'cause it's gonna take some more time.
Number 13.
Who's gonna?
13, review the El Osso.
Well, but I think it's gonna take some time.
I don't think so, Judge.
I'm trying to knock out quickly, here. Agenda Item Number 16, we'll get through this one way or the other. Approved District, Agenda Item Number 16. Approved District Attorney's Request To Use The County Credit Card For The Victims Assistant Coordinator Conference At Great Wolf Lodge, woo, on November 5th through the 7th, 2025, and The Elected Prosecutor's Conference At Hyatt Regency On December 3rd through the 5th, 2025. Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? And, folks, these are things we already have the, this is largely housekeeping, so we're not just running over it. We have a representative from the District Attorney's Office, do you have a president? Nothing? Wow.
And to repeat what we said at another meeting, this is where the conferences are, is why they have to stay at these particular hotels.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know, there's a big indoor water slide up there, great, well, everybody's looking forward on. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number 17. Approve Grant Agreement Between B County And The Texas Comptroller Public Accounts For Senate Bill 22 Rural Sheriff's Office Salary Assistance Program Award Number IA-0000002164.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number 18. Approve B County Resolution Authorizing Submission Of Grant Application For Bullet-Resistant Components For Law Enforcement Vehicles Fiscal Year 2026 Project Number 5641201 To The Office Of The Governor.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number 19. Approve Office Of The Governor Public Safety Office Law Enforcement Certifications And Assurances Form For The Sheriff's Office Bullet-Resistant Components For Law Enforcement Vehicles Grant Project Number, what this looks like, okay, 5641201, it coincides with the prior agenda item.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I didn't even give y'all, Sheriff, I'm sorry, you and Chief Deputy have been here all morning patiently, I didn't give you a chance to wow us with some oratorical splendor? No, okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number 20. Approve Food Service Agreement For Inmate Meals Between Trinity Food Services And B County For The Sheriff's Office Jail. Do we have anything there, is it standard?
Move to approve with the comment.
I have a motion, I have a second, I have a motion, and so, I'm gonna give it to Commissioner Lenny this time, I did hear him, he edged you out by a nanosecond.
The comment, there's no price increase, and the total is $26,435. There was no price increase, so, and they, in their presentation, they said that because of the good job you guys are doing in the jail, they didn't go up on the price. So, y'all did good.
Well done, thank you, Sheriff.
The price did go up last year. Yeah, and so, that's why we're just.
We're not worried about last year, we're worried about this.
So, we got savings, savings built in, we can get that back into the general fund.
They did good.
All right, there's no further discussion, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number 21. Approve Agreement Between B County And Flock Safety For The Sheriff's Office Automated License Plate Reader Camera System.
Move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Think we got all y'all's agenda items, thank you for your patience here.
13, El Osso?
Yeah, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 13. Review And Assist El Osso Municipal Water Supply District Regarding The Leaking Six-Inch Water Line. regarding the leaking six-inch water lines serving Pawnee. Commissioner DeWitt, this is your agenda item. Of course, we have Mr. Krim present as well. Y'all have the floor.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners. Been working very close with Mr. Krim and El Osso, and also the Pawnee School System, trying to figure out what we can do. I think what we're doing today is just saying, if there's anything out there we can find, we will support for the El Osso, but somebody's gonna have to bring something to the court. Right now, we don't have anything. I know y'all are working with Langford. We've got, our grant people and some other people are looking for money. Our grant writer and administrator is right behind you, Ms. Melvin. So you have the floor, sir. Have you found anything?
No, I have not. Thank you all for hearing me again. No, we haven't found anything yet, but we were looking at a Colonial grant, but it's, it's December twenty-fifth is when they're passing them out, so we have to wait another year so that, and they come out in like September twenty-six. So we are also, we have federal funding that we're applying for through Monica de la Cruz, and that's like, that's for other projects. It wasn't considering this one, so we're looking all over the place for it. Like I say, we have a lot of old lines, you know, that are critical infrastructure lines, and we are, El Osso itself is replacing a bunch of the smaller ones that we can afford to replace. I'm drawing in a big loop about five miles of eight-inch pipe, and we're doing that on our own as well. We just need a little assistance.
Mr. Krim?
Yes, sir.
I recall that Texas Water Development Board at one time had no interest grants?
Yes, we can get low interest, we can get low interest loans.
Right, loans, that's what I meant. I mean, if this is an emergency situation, we may need to do that while we're looking for somebody who's got some money just to write us out a check.
Yes, sir. We're looking for them as well.
Okay.
Have you reached out to Coastal Bank Council of Governments?
No, sir.
They're located in Corpus Christi. Their executive director, Emily Martinez, and her team may have some grant. I know they had a kickoff meeting. It's all state and federal funds, but they are, the CB COG, I feel like I'm gonna give a commercial for the CB COG. CB COG has rejuvenated its focus on trying to assist community stakeholders in grant finding opportunities. If you would, Mr. Krim, if you would get with my office sometime today, we'll get you Ms. Martinez's telephone number so you can reach out directly to her and let her know that, that I sent you, or Commissioner DeWitt sent you. We're both on the board, and she'll put you in touch with the right people. There may be some, some opportunities there that might fit within your metrics. I know there's also, I don't know if you've gotten with the governor's office, but sometimes that's a good way to, to utilize bureaucracy to, to find opportunities for you, even if it's not something that they directly can assist you with. They may be able to put you in touch with, with a resource that we're just not aware of at this time.
And something that I might add, our county judge is the chairman of the board, so if we can get your foot in the door, we can do what we can to push that door open.
Absolutely.
So please, please contact them. Contact Ms. Martinez. She's very vivacious. She'll, she'll, she'll start looking.
Absolutely, and I believe Karnes County is part of the Alamo area.
COG.
COG, and they're a very strong COG group as well, and I would just recommend you touch base with.
Judge Hertke?
Thank you, Judge Hertke, and ask for what input he may have. And if he doesn't have any input, I know Judge Teal's real active on the AA COG as well.
Very good.
Sir, there's a new commissioner that was put on the, on the Texas Water Development Board that represents us up here, and I believe that Commissioner Fuentes from Hidalgo County, he's on that board, and so is Commissioner David Garza from Cameron County. That would be two good contacts to locate that, but he represents us all the way to B County.
Very good. I'll take anything. I'll look anywhere you guys recommend.
Absolutely, and anything that we can do to assist you, we're, we're, we're here and we want to help. So we definitely want to, to the extent you need any type of assistance that we can provide, we are, we're certainly here to help you. So we're not trying to pass the buck.
No, no, I appreciate it.
But you definitely have our backing. So thank you so much, Mr. Krim.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much.
Yes, and please touch base with Ms. Melvin. She has some contacts also.
I believe there's no action to make take on this.
No, sir. Thank you, little judge.
Yes, sir. Agenda item number fourteen, approve updates and revisions to the B County Expo rental agreement. Commissioner Farias, this is your agenda item. What you got?
Judge, we've used the same rental agreement for that. It's just, I think that we need to look at it again, or in light of the, you know.
What changes have you made?
We were looking at the, what I was looking at is, we had a, an incident that happened, and, but no, I just want to make sure that whoever comes to rent up here, that they're aware of these things, or to provide their, if it's a, three, one? Okay, three, one. On the item E, insurance requirements, the general liability and the liquor liability. If they could make sure that there was a attached document to the contract.
So it sounds like a process improvement there when we do initiate the lease, that we are receiving these documents.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. You know, it's, it's very difficult. We had that issue, this issue come up earlier this year. You know, the vast majority of our expo rentals are for community members, and you can group them in with silver and golden anniversaries, quinceañeras, big birthdays, other family styled events, and it's competitive to get on our calendar. And one of the things that we see is oftentimes whether they're sophisticated entities that are looking to put on a money generating event, families looking to put on a large family event or community event, 501(c)(3)'s or aspirational 501(c)(3)'s looking to, to do something for the community that's good for the community. They all have a lot of shortcomings when it comes to getting all their ducks in a row. And so as far as the lease agreement goes, there is the black and white letters of the lease agreement, but there's also the practical component of the lease agreement when we have somebody who's never done this before, a mom who's trying to put on a quinceañera for her daughter. We try to work with them as far as the dates go, and their deadlines, and coming up with the money, and coming up with the coverage that they need, and, and dotting their i's and crossing their t's. But the bottom line is, there could always be, and in this case, there, although Mr. Rodriguez has done a yeoman's job along with Ms. Gomez in managing this process, there's a lot I think that we could do to assist them to make it easier, make it easier for them to communicate to the third party seeking to rent the facility of what their obligations are, so that they don't seem surprised when we point to, to a provision in their contract that they signed when they only looked at the front page, and we said, well, no, you do have to have security, and this is how much it's gonna cost, and these are your options. And all of a sudden, it becomes a, we can't put the deal on anymore, or it becomes a very stressful situation for them. So I, I think, I think improving this is a great idea. Is this one, has this, have any changes been made, or is this just a, what I'd like to do is, is get a voluntary commissioners committee of two commissioners to go through this and look and see what improvements, work with WALLY, work with Pauleta, see what improvements that could be made to the, not only the lease agreement, but the mechanism for tracking and following it, and, and bring it back to the future Commissioners Court meeting, because I think this is an area where we could have definite improvement. I really appreciate y'all bringing this to our attention.
And I did check with Landon Gulick and Randy Shower, and all the kids that participate in 4H programs, if they're signing up with 4H, they're covered by the state. So I was kind of worried. What happens up, they use our facilities all the time, so what happens if one of them falls, breaks, and, no, they're, they're, they're covered.
Yes, sir.
So even if they travel with them, as long as they're 4H, signed up with 4H, they're covered under their umbrella. I, I think this, this needs to be tightened up a little bit more.
Great.
You know, whatever we do, it needs to be coordinated in, by the county attorney, and probably community affairs, because I know that Mr. Jimmison has seen some things in here that, that need some tweaking.
Thank you for reminding me, because I do know that we talked about that. I'm sorry, Mr. Jimmison, but I think you'd be a great addition to this ad hoc committee as well. Are there any commissioners who'd like to volunteer for this role?
Man.
Thank y'all so much for your willingness to volunteer.
You're more than welcome, Judge.
I've got an ad hoc committee of Commissioner Olivares.
I'll do it.
Okay, and Commissioner Lenny, thank you. Commissioner Lenny, look at you got off the.
Look at this.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Rights. This is great.
I was just.
Cambo Jimmison, and then certainly, I mean, Lupin, Mr. Knight, but I, I'm not, I'm not going to appoint him to the ad hoc committee. I don't think that's a realistic, given his limited time availability. Anything further on this agenda item? Thank y'all for bringing it to my attention. No motion is necessary. We'll move on. Agenda item number fifteen, approve installation of safety and security lighting on existing poles at St. Mary's Street, Refurio Street, First Street, and County Road six thousand two, and Skidmore Tining. Commissioner Olivares, this is your agenda item. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Yeah, this one, I've been working here for quite some time, a little over a year, to try and get some security lighting throughout the, throughout the community. Not only have I noticed some of the challenges we're having in the area because of poor lit areas, but also had many citizens, volunteer fire departments, and churches express the same safety concern. So I did meet with Madam Auditor earlier this year prior to budgeting to ensure that we had at least a few dollars to add to, to the budgets, so that we could incorporate some of these. One of the, the big items to include in here is I have, I had an opportunity to meet with AEP engineer. There is actually two. There's one out of South Beach County, and there's one out of Beville. So the engineer I met with was Mr. Raul. Him and I conducted a field trip and went to each one of these locations to ensure that we would have a good, proper placement of the lighting, in addition to that, to understand what cost impact would be back to the county. Fortunately, the locations that we've, we've identified, the light fixtures would be zero cost back to the county. The cost of the county would include basically the monthly fee for, for the lighting, so similar to the other lighting we have in place. So that's the good news for us. And then all of these, you know, wouldn't require a new pole, wouldn't require any transformers, basically use what's existing there. So that's, that's very, very good for us. This is also pretty much, well, not pretty much, this isn't compliance with the, I want to say, it's not really an ordinance here, and to the resolution that was put together. You know, the pole is located on public right of way, so we checked that mark. An existing electrical pole must be available to process the light fixture and deferred costs. We meet that criteria as well. The intersections of hills and curves, unfortunately, we don't have any big hills and curves, so that really doesn't apply. But it is, you know, there are, there are facilities there, like the Dollar General, which is extremely dark. We have reached out to them, and for whatever reason, they're not putting up any lights. So I feel confident we're meeting all of the requirements to, for these lights to go up.
Do you have a motion, sir?
So my motion would be to improve the safety and security for persons traveling on County Road at a cost of roughly around approximately twelve dollars and sixty-four cents of light per month, per light, which comes out at about seventy-five dollars a month.
I'll second. How many are there totals that you're putting in?
So total, I had identified, identified five locations in Tining, five locations in Skidmore, five locations in Papalote, and five in Beville.
So this, this is twenty?
It's only.
Yeah. No, no, this, for this, for this, for this motion is only these.
Okay.
Totally. I'll, I'll be back, I'll be back, coming back.
That's why I was asking.
The only clarity I want to make around that is identified these areas. Doesn't mean that they have to go in, or doesn't mean that we need to, county needs to spend the money, but part of the, part of the budgeting process to ensure that was included.
So this is for four?
So currently, right now, this is for.
One, two, three, four.
This is for six. So I have here, I'll read, I'll read the locations.
Street and County Road six oh two.
Let me, let me read the locations here.
Four.
Okay, so I have two lights that are gonna occur on Refurio, I'm sorry, on St. Mary's Street.
Wait a minute, which one we start on, St. Mary's?
St. Mary's.
Two on that one?
Two on that one. There's gonna be one between one eighty-one and Seventh Street, and one on a corner of Seventh Street. The other on St. Mary's, that's the, that's, that's two lights there. Then on a corner, Refurio and Fourth Street. Yeah, included one twice. Yeah, so one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, it's five lights.
So only two on St. Mary's?
Two, yeah. Two, yeah, two on St. Mary's, one in the corner, St. Mary, one in the corner of Refurio on Fourth Street, the three hundred block of First Street, and then on County Road six oh two.
Where on County Road six oh two?
It's gonna fall in the middle, because that road is a dead end. There's traffic that's been going through there. So in order to, to balance it out, we're gonna place it in the middle of the road.
So your motion is to approve the installation of safety and security line, security lighting on existing poles at US one eighty-one and Seventh Street intersection, and then later on Seventh, the intersection of Seventh Street and St. Mary's Street.
Correct. In the corner.
The intersection of Refurio Street and Fourth Street.
Correct.
The three hundred block of First Street, in the middle of County Road six thousand and two.
That's correct.
At a cost, estimated cost of twelve dollars and sixty-four cents per light, per month, totaling about seventy-five dollars per month in cost.
That's correct.
Okay, that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, and that was your second?
That's my second.
I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes without exception. Okay, save the best for la, well, no, I haven't. I've still got, I've got lots to work with here, and y'all have been so patient. I know. Do y'all, agenda item number twenty-two, Hurricane, I'm saving you for the dead last. Well, there's one after you, but it's just adjournment. Agenda item number twenty-two, Hurricane Harvey, Texas General Land Office, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Status and Project Update. Gentlemen, anything to update?
Yes, so we've already conducted Beck March surveys at the Silver Creek Bridge, and engineers have gone to the site and started that survey. We've also started a detailed design review of exactly what type of bridge it is. The target is to complete a thirty percent detailed design review and submit it within the next few weeks, so hopefully we'll get that going. In Pettis, they're still conducting a detailed research, trying to get more data to determine exactly how that design needs to be completed. So things, things are continuing.
That's on that waterway?
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. Anything else? Okay, now, moving on to agenda item number eleven. We're so excited, Candy. We've been waiting all agenda for this. Agenda item number eleven, approve Agenda Management System Software Proposal for Commissioners Court. We do have, I'm sorry, Candy, but you're gonna have to come up. We have Mrs. Estrada with the county judge's office, who has done, so y'all know, we are automated agenda management system. At least, it, it works. It can be a little bit frustrating and difficult at times. It can be a little clunky, especially for our elected officials and department heads on submitting of agenda items, submitting backup paperwork. To the great benefit of all elected officials and department heads in the county, we have Candy Estrada, who works in my office and has been there for, since how long, fourteen years? Fifteen years. And she knows everything there is to know about the systems. She also is the one when, when agenda items are submitted incorrectly, or incompletely, or in the case of everybody sitting at this table, at least the vast majority of us, the vast majority of the time, we just send her an email, and she does it all for us. It is, it is, can be incredibly time consuming, and can be incredibly frustrating. And usually, that frustration is between the hours of seven PM and two AM on the night before we have to post the agenda. And, and so in looking at. And, and so in looking at, I think, I think we're having to go through this process, but you've gone and you've, you've looked at, we moved to Civic Plus for purposes of our website, is that correct?
Yes.
Not too long ago. They have a companion product that could provide agenda management services for us. You've compared the two, and you have a proposal that you've submitted to Commissioners' Court that's in our agenda packet. I know the commissioners may have some questions and insight, and so I'm going to turn the floor over to you if you'd like to give your summary as you see, as you see it, and your recommendation, and then answer questions. That's great. If you'd like to answer, answer questions right off the bat, you have the floor. Thank you, Candy.
You're welcome. Okay. Granicus, we've been with them for several years, but they are currently discontinuing the current program that we're on, so that end of life is going to be the end of this year. So that's why we started looking around for another agenda management program. So we went to Civic Plus, and I reviewed it, Cindy reviewed it with me, went over it with Paletta, and we also looked at Granicus's product, and Civic Plus is just a lot more user friendly. It's cheaper, and they offer more services at a cheaper price. So I also had several people go back and look over at their website that constituents go on and look at, just to see how user friendly it was, and they seemed to like Civic Plus more. So I think it's a, it's a, for me, I like, it looks better, and it's, it works better. Like their website, I was able to train myself to go on there and use it. It's just very user friendly. So looking at their, their product when they were showing it to us, it looks a lot easier than what we currently have.
Okay.
So I think maybe best to go with them.
Do we already include this in our, in the budget, like I asked? Is this already a, just a?
I know we talked about it at the end of the year.
We paid for Granicus.
Okay.
For the current system, which we pay about, what, 800, I think it's 800, that we pay for this product. They're being discontinued. It looks, I mean, the startup is what, is what would be put out prior, and we do have sufficient professional service funds to be able to absorb that, and then the annual cost will pay annual cost.
I had a hard time following the dollars. I saw 30,000 here, 20,000 there, and all.
Well, so if you see this gray area, Commissioner, the one that says the Civic Plus?
For us, it's green.
It has, yes, well, but ours is gray. I've got a total investment startup cost.
I know that we just got there saying we're spending 800 a month, but now we're talking about 22, 8, 6, 5, 37?
Okay, so, so first of all, we don't, we're spending 800 a month on a program that's.
Going to be discontinued.
Starting January 1st.
Right.
So now the option is, this is the new Granicus project, and this is the old Gran, and this is Civic Plus.
Oh, okay, okay.
So this is the cost for the Civic Plus, the cost for Granicus, and that's the difference.
I got it.
Just showing that Granicus is more expensive across the board.
And is there another, any other products out here, and has IT been involved?
Candy?
Is there any other product out there, and has IT been involved? What's, what's our recommendation?
Good morning, gentlemen. Craig Oliver, IT Director. Yes, we have been involved. Me and Candy went over this last year. It was not a good time to take that project on at the time because of other pressing items during the time to get that started, and not only that, but Granicus was also extending it to the end of this year, so that gave us a little bit of time to release a little bit of pressure for Candy. We did look at other products. The Granicus product that she is looking at to continue, she didn't like because it was not as user friendly navigation. It is still a client platform, which means we have to have a piece of software that everyone that logs into it has to use, as to where with Civic Plus, it's all web based, much like our email and everything else. You just go to a website and sign in, credentials match, you get to do what you need to do and handle it that way. It also integrates with our new platform that we went to on our website, which keeps us compliant, and that was one of my big issues, is Civic Plus is helping us stay compliant legally. So this helps with our agenda meetings, I guess we do Robert's Rules and things. It also integrates in with the minutes for the county clerk to be able to keep up with that, both streaming, audio and stuff, to have that available as well. So overall, the price to me looked like Civic Plus was coming in less than what we looked at, and they were, like she said, they're offering additional services that keeps us up to date, so. And on your, your comment about, you know, 1:00 in the morning, yes, this last, this last agenda, I did receive an email from Candy at 1:00 AM.
It wasn't working.
And I say this only because during these times, with the current platform and moving forward with Granicus, when they have an update to their client program, she has to get us involved because of the installation of the software, you know, that's one of our, our policies, our security policies. So we have to remote into wherever she's at, update the program, and then she's able to go ahead and complete what she needs to do. So this alleviates a lot of that, because it's all server side without having a client, so.
Judge, I've had an opportunity to sit down with Candy and review the current program, and it's a little bit clunky. It's a little bit challenging to get into. It's not very user friendly, so anything above that would be a plus back to the county and to the commissioners that actually log into that account or search for details, so I think this is a plus. So I guess with them.
One last thing, Civic Plus was going to give us a discount on the product as well, because we do, we now have multiple products through them. We have their social archiving, which archives all of our social media accounts, our web, our web hosting, and then now bringing this on would also be bundled into a group platform, so.
And how quickly can we get this done?
That would be on Civic Plus. There is an onboarding process that it does take. If we can get it signed and over to them, I think you probably know that question.
We're looking at 12 weeks.
Ah. Move to approve.
I'll second.
Let's just cut to the chase, Judge.
You stole Commissioner Olivatas's motion.
I did.
And all three of y'all seconded at exactly the same time, so we have a motion and a second.
It's a photo finisher.
But there's, so there was two.
Further discussion? Yeah, go ahead, Candy.
Items, so there's one, which is just the regular Civic Plus product.
Uh huh.
Just the agenda management program, and then there's the other one, which we're adding, the Civic Plus media video streaming and on demand. So basically what that does is it puts our live stream and the agenda together. So if a constituent were watching it, and they, or went back to re-watch it, they can just click on an item, and it would take them to that area in the video.
Oh, man.
And show the documents as well.
That's pretty cool.
And again, if you'll, if you'll give us the total amount that it's going to cost?
So for that one would be startup cost?
Total amount?
Total, total.
For everything?
Everything.
18,650.
That's what we're, no.
Would be startup, and then your first year cost would be the 15,600. But that would be, we do those, I think, in monthly payments rate?
That way we'd have it in the record as to what it's going to cost.
Okay, so, so the total upfront cost is 18,650, and then the annual cost beginning once installation is complete is 15,600?
Correct.
Built monthly? So the motion is to approve 18,650 and annual cost of 15,600, is that correct, April?
That is, that is my motion, sir.
I thought that's what I heard.
That's exactly what I said.
That's what Commissioner Olivatas was going to say.
That's what he was going to say, I know. I jumped out and got in front of him.
Got it. All right, is there any further discussion? Thank everybody that's, that's looked at this and worked on it. I only hope, I know I'm something of a short timer, but I only hope that Civic Plus provides less roadblocks and hindrances to agenda management than our current provider has. So, and thank you, Candy, for doing the work on this. There's no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. We did it without taking a potty break. Can we just strike that off the record? It's good, and I know we're live. We have no executive session items to discuss. Agenda item number 23, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Going once, going twice. If, there's no further to find, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your patience, your presence, and your input today. Great meeting.